Here's six o'clock, so I'm gonna call it to call the meeting order. Say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united on, invincible, with liberty and justice for all. And we've got everything tonight, we've got a quorum, so that's good. Uh, number three, we got a couple of changes that we're gonna do here. We're gonna table number nine, and we're gonna table discussion on ten A and ten B. We will have the public hearing, emails have been published. Uh, the other thing that we're gonna do is we're gonna move items seventeen and eighteen up to right after number seven. So. Otherwise, I don't, those are the only ones I know about unless Brent and everybody.
That's it.
That's it. Okay, so I'm looking for somebody to approve the agenda with said changes.
I get approved.
Okay.
Second.
I mean, Chelsea, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Consent agenda, anybody have any questions on that that haven't been? Nothing's changed, any of that stuff, right Jim? I mean, it was pretty much as it was, so.
Nope.
No changes. Okay, if there's no questions.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, second.
Chelsea makes a motion, Sarah is the second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And carries. Okay, approval of the council minutes from last, last time we all met. They looked okay to me, I don't know if somebody saw some discrepancy in there that we missed.
I didn't see anything.
Okay, so I'll look for a motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Second.
Okay, Sarah made a motion after the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. The minute from our special council meeting on June one. That was all pretty much laid out as well, so we have the under. No questions, I'll look for a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, anyone make some motion?
Second.
Second by Chelsea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, we're on the public comments, has anybody got anything they wanna say tonight? Grab the microphone and introduce yourself if you do.
John Colvin, we have a five fifty Westbrook Drive, got an issue with maintenance of Wall Avenue.
Okay, that's probably gonna come under our dust control thing here, but go ahead.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's specifically what it is.
Yeah.
It's beyond a nuisance, and the lack of any kind of attempt at maintenance has really made it a dangerous road. And taking the personal side out of it for us, we live right on Wall, can't have a window open, it's, it's a hazard. It's a hazard. If you're driving down there, anybody live in Lost River or beyond?
Drive over all the time.
You gotta see it every day. You can be on kids before you even know it because of the dust that curls off that road. There's no breeze that blows through there, I've got pictures and videos of it, just turns up like a big dust storm and sits there. It's a hazard. I called the city about it, and I was told there's no plans for maintaining that road because there's a dispute with the township. I contacted the township, the township said that they need a quarter inch of water, a quarter inch of rain before they can apply a chemical. So, we can't help Mother Nature, but we gotta think outside the box here. I've been on city council before, in another city, another state, problems come up, you gotta be able to solve them. I mean, there's no shortage of water trucks around here, another solution to put the moisture down, put a chemical on there to make that road safe to travel. And I know the whole road thing is tangled in with annexation, but that's no excuse for neglecting that road. It's an absolute hazard, somebody's gonna get hurt or killed. We've got children right now that ride their bikes down our ditch, and I welcome that, that's the safest, I, I mean, I would've done that. Ride through our yard, I wouldn't have gone down that road, you're gonna get killed. But to drive down there, and I don't know what the ownership is, we get different stories depending on the meetings and who we talk to. Is it north half township, south half city, is it east-west? Doesn't matter what the boundaries of ownership are, the city and the township have a responsibility to their citizens, and we still pay taxes for our township. You guys have a responsibility for maintaining that road in a safe condition until some kind of a resolution can be made between city, township, residents. And, you know, I said it on social media, I'm not a fan of commenting on social media, I just feel like we're, we're, uh, we're being smoked out. For no plan for the city to do anything with that road, and the township waiting for rain. We're in a drought, everyone's waiting for rain, you gotta come up with a solution. And a water truck's a real cheap, easy solution to apply something to make it safe.
Right, and that's what we're gonna be talking about here after public comments, so.
Yeah, and I, I will go so far as to say that I did go to John and Mary's property, and I visited with Randy and Nicole, if I have that correct, um, for quite some time, um, and to really get an understanding of the situation, so I'll reserve those comments for when we bring those items up, but I appreciate you guys coming in today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anybody else, anything you wanna talk about? Okay.
Hi, my name's Martin Holhalter, live at one oh six oh nine County Road seventeen South. Um, nothing really too big, I have a couple issues that have been more irritants, I guess, than anything. But, um, one is that city council meetings aren't being livestreamed anymore, and I've sent emails on this. Um, I think in the sake of transparency, I mean, you see how big this room is and how many people are here tonight, I think this is something we need to work on. Whether it's Facebook Live or some other format. If the city decides we're not gonna livestream anymore, I think the videos need to be posted in a more timely fashion, we need to get the videos up um, very quick. And my main concern is more special assessments coming from my neighborhood, uh, which leads me into my next topic. Um, special assessment policy meetings, I've heard some of them have been put, getting put off, and just wondering, uh, what kind of progress is being made? When the residents might be, when we might be revisiting that, because the special assessments are going to be assigned here very soon again. There's new specials that are not even posted on the website yet, so those of us that wanna keep up on that, wanna see maps, those types of things, that's not up there readily available. Instead of having people bug in city staff and eating up their time, um, it's one way to just get it out there, so it's out there. And just wanna say too, um, I think as, in regards to the special assessment policy, I mean, we have cities, surrounding cities, that are doing developments without specials too. I mean, I think we need to start thinking outside the box on that, but I, I commend the city council for exploring it and actually getting, you know, a process on how this is, is gonna happen. But I'd like to see it move along, and maybe you would too. Kind of along the same lines as the website is building permit reports, um, in any business, um, reports are due at a certain time. The reports haven't been updated since April, so I mean, if the, it's the first that needs to be, you know, reports need to be filed, they need to be filed, and, and just so it's, everything's up to date. And I realize the website's being redone and everything too, and there's a lot of moving parts there, but as a citizen, I guess, uh, just trying to keep up on things and, and making sure things are done timely, so. If there's, uh, things that we need to do on our part, you know, there's some legal process and things that, you know, it's within a certain timeframe that it has to happen, so. Those are, I guess those are a couple things that I had.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Appreciate you bringing them up.
All right.
And on the video thing, we are looking into that again, we've had some technical issues with that, we're looking into it.
Okay, I really appreciate that.
It'll probably come back here soon, as soon as we can figure out a couple things with that.
Okay, I certainly appreciate your time, thank you.
And I'd like to just state too, Martin, um, the people that do watch online, they like to watch live.
Uh-huh.
You coming in here and speaking on your, your feelings on these topics, it, it really does make an impact versus, you know, comments that we have to kinda weed through to some of those, uh, video streams.
Oh, absolutely.
So, thank you.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Okay, anybody else got anything they wanna bring up here? Going once, going twice. All right, we'll move on then to item, I guess it's seventeen for now. This is the, we're gonna talk, first of all, the Wall Avenue speed limit reduction, Jim, you wanna go over that one, what we're talking about there?
So currently, the speed of Wall Avenue is twenty-five miles an hour, Wall Avenue sees a lot of truck traffic, sees a lot of car traffic, and a lot of contractor traffic. Contractor traffic is probably not going twenty-five miles an hour, as are most of the cars are not. So, in part of our issue with the dust is speed, or at least the speed you go, the more speed is, I know Sarah, you did some test trials, or whatever you wanna call them, last week on what, what speed generates dust and what doesn't, so, um, one of the topics that we've talked internally at staff level is reducing the speed on Wall Avenue to try to keep some of that dust down. And, right now, it's twenty-five miles an hour, we go down probably fifteen miles an hour or so, just to try to limit the amount of dust, try to increase the safety, you know, like resident talked about, the kids, you don't know they're there till you come up on them. So, hopefully, um, you know, increase that distance that you can spot the kids and spot the cars and traffic coming, so. Uh, that's something that was brought up to our office, we looked into it, and there is some studies on, on, um, dust and speed. I found this report, it just happened to Google today, it says, slow down, do to reduce road dust, pretty simple fact there. Uh, they actually had in that report, um, road dust varies in speed, slowing down from twenty miles per hour to ten miles per hour cuts the dust by over sixty percent. Now, I don't know how accurate this is, I just found it this afternoon, but it was out on, it was produced by, it was Alaska or something like that, but one that I happened to find, so.
But I mean, I noticed that too, when I drive on the road, if I drive down fifteen miles an hour, I'm not picking up as much as if I'm driving, say, even twenty-five or thirty, you're blowing a lot more dust. So I've just learned, I've just backed off, when I drive there, I know I get people piling up behind you when I'm driving, but whatever, it doesn't blow as much dust when you bring it down.
One of the biggest concerns that I saw, and I believe that this is one piece of a multifaceted solution. Uh, I believe that there's, you know, possibilities for water, dust control, or, you know, future work on the road and things like that. But I will tell you that when I was out there, I spent forty-five minutes on a Friday night, and it was unbelievably hot, unbelievably windy, and literally, not only myself out there taking samples of the road, because I, I do some civil work, right? But also taking a look at the speeds of the traffic and the types of traffic on a Friday night after work. And so, we didn't have just residents out there, we had contractors getting out of their job sites and boogying to go home, right? We had some gravel trucks, we had some concrete trucks, uh, a number of different things, and so, I drove out there at twenty-five miles an hour, following the speed limit, and there was a pretty good cloud behind me. I opened my windows to see how fast I would have to go to have the cloud actually get into my windows, and it wasn't much over twenty-five before that cloud really started coming back in. Twenty or less when I tried those, 'cause I ran at ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, thirty, I didn't dare go any faster than that, 'cause the washboard was ridiculous, but, um, realistically, anything twenty or less was reasonable to lower the amounts of dust. Now, is that the end-all be-all? No, but for the safety concerns that so many have brought up with children, and the fact that the visibility is very difficult, I think that that's one of the things that can be done, and a good place to start. And I witnessed it myself from not only the corner of Lost River, the first entrance, also from your backyard, (laugh) thank you for granting me permission. And I think we also need to look at some of the traffic control going on out there, and we need to have some enforcement, we have some, um, some sheriffs here, I'm sure there'll be a sheriff's report coming. If we do lower the speed limit over there, we need to make darn sure, and, and I don't mean just one of you, I, I mean, whoever's on duty needs to really look at enforcing that speed limit and enforcing the contractors. If we start slowing these contractors down, I think it's gonna make a big difference, so I would ask for that enforcement if that's a direction that we wanna go.
But I think even so, it probably wouldn't hurt to have more enforcement along there anyways, just because the contractors are moving a lot quicker through there, so. I would be up for a little bit more enforcement in that area.
And I'm in a contractor truck too, and if I'm going too fast, you stop me. You know what I mean? I mean, it, it doesn't matter who you are, slow the hell down on this road, we got kids, and we got people that can't see anything, and I mean that with all seriousness, that we really need to take this very seriously. So, any help you could provide would be of great assistance, but I'll let you continue, Jim, please.
That's all I had as far as that discussion though.
Yeah, it was just to see whether we wanted to, city wanted to promote lower that speed on that road.
Is there any reason that anyone would be opposed to lowering the speed on that road?
Other than that we don't own it. Todd? Do you care one way or the other if we, uh, ask you nicely to drop the speed limit on the road?
Yeah, we might need to have that conversation.
What's the section to comment on that, that hasn't already been discussed? But Tom, I have with me Kevin Biffert, um, please stand, Mr. Biffert.
I don't think you stand.
He's going through his conflict resolution maneuvers. We have a government that is designed to govern and take care of rural roads.
Would you stand up to the microphone here so we can hear you better? Sorry, nothing like putting me on the spot, right? Help us understand.
I've never done this before, okay, well, the township is designed from the start for rural gravel roads. And we do a pretty fair job, it's a simple homespun governed by your neighbor type, type of, uh, setup of the government. It works really well in about ninety-some percent of the roads that we have. And then we have one or two roads like Wall Avenue, which is up against a municipality, and wherever you've got a concentration of people, it seems to encourage further development in the adjacent adjoining areas. And pretty soon, you got a gravel road that is governed by a township that behaves in every sense of the word like a city road. And I, I had the occasion to come a little early tonight, and I went over and, and parked next to one of the county's finest and watched some of the dust roll. And what I came up with, um, was that really, I thought your speeds were commendable. I was rather impressed that, this was rush hour, and five-thirty, and people were coming home from work, and you know what? Um, most of the speeds were between fifteen and twenty. And the officer I spoke with said, it's, it's rare to write a ticket. Well, that tells me speed isn't really a real big issue, I think lowering the speed would help. That's easy for me to say, because we aren't very well situated for enforcement in the township. We reply, we rely on, on the county sheriffs to do our enforcement, and they don't like being told how to do their job any more than you or I would. And I don't blame them one bit, um, and they can't be everywhere all the time, and that's just the way it is. Lowering the speed might help a little bit, what I noticed is you got somebody driving a little slow, following the speed limit, doing fifteen, twenty, they end up with two or three cars behind them. And pretty soon, you got a caravan, two, three, four, I suppose during rush hour, even more sometimes, and you got three, four cars rolling down this road, and then you meet one or two going the other direction. It is just a non-stop chaos of dust, and this is a losing proposition, I don't know how anybody can have a solution that's gonna win, short of paving that road. That won't happen, the township, one of the gentlemen that spoke before me, the first one, said it's a little confusing whose jurisdiction it is. Well, you know what, that statement right there covers it, there's parts of the road that are the city, there's parts of the road that are just, are all township, and there's parts of the road that are fifty-fifty. You got a little bit of everything, and what a mess it is, um.
Do we have that map handy? I asked that that.
Can the township give up the road?
The township can't give it up. The, the law says we can't, we can't give up our responsibility, we can't give up our authority. We can, we can have it taken from us, and boy, are we rooting for you that's annexation.
Why is annexation?
Because it is our responsibility, we can't shirk our responsibility, we, but yet, we have budget constraints. We have budget constraints, and we normally don't use dust control. In my, I've been on the township board for twenty-eight, twenty-nine years, I'm still trying to forget, anyway, we've used dust control once. Then came, then comes Wall Avenue, and we used it last year, and that was strictly, um, public safety, and people would say that we were very slow, we dragged our feet, and we really put it down too late. We wanted to make good and darn sure that we were past the rainy season. The way it works, when you get rain, you need a certain amount of moisture, I think, in order to work with the calcium carbonate or wherever the, the chemical is. And you need a little bit of moisture to make it work. If you get a good hard rain, let's say in three-quarters of an inch or an inch, then it doesn't, this chemical does not work well with water, it mixes into an, just a slurry, and it holds the moisture. And pretty soon, you got people sliding around, you can't stop, they go too fast, 'cause hey, I'm not making any dust, full speed ahead, and pretty soon, you can't, people can't stop, and they're sliding, that's also a hazard.
Plus the potholes that we get from that too, it's just like what happened last year, you know, the more people drove on it, we got all the potholes, and it was hard to get rid of them, even with the blade.
I might, I might defer to your counterpart, because you have experience putting this chemical down, and, and I did make some calls to find out what this chemical is made of, what the properties are, right? So it's in essence a salt, a liquid brine, and, and it does heat away the roadway, and this is already a, an unstable roadway. We've tried and made some changes, but I think that there might be some alternative products, possibly, I don't know, um.
It's called pavement. How about slide oil?
Yeah, that was, uh, that was Mr. Biffert.
The reason we haven't put the dust control down as the township is, we haven't got moisture, as everyone knows, and the guy that does the blade, he doesn't wanna water the road, because it's another expense that you have to do before you do the, the dust control. So he's saying tonight or tomorrow, we might get a rainstorm, and that's what we're gonna watch for, if we don't get that, then we're gonna put dust control down after we've watered it. It's another expense we have to go through.
And, do we have that map?
Is, is the blue township in the red city?
Yes.
Yes, the blue, the blue is the township.
Why can't the city and township work together to maintain that whole road? I understand what you're saying, but, um, for reasonable dust control, uh, you can't legislate more out. And we live right there on Wall Avenue, and you can hear contractors and residents, you can, from our house, you can hear them wind up out further by the verge, and by the time they come past us, they're fit, they're doing forty, fifty mile an hour, and that's no joke. So unless there's twenty-four hour enforcement, you can't control what people are gonna do on that road, if you, if you lower it to ten, they don't care. And it's, most are.
You gotta give them.
We're not talking about most.
You gotta give them quite a few tickets before they start listening.
But someone has to, they started doing it on, on Cheyenne, and all of a sudden, people are driving slower. It gets around, and it's not gonna help with the washboard, and it's not gonna help with the dust so much, if we lower this.
Like you said, a caravan of cars is still going to kick up, even doing the speed limit, so, I, that, that's my concern, is even if the speed limit is lowered to fifteen, ten miles an hour, there's, uh, four hundred some lots that are platted for on all of Lost River, have no idea about memory lane. That's a lot of just people going back and forth to work, and the pictures that I took this morning were just people going to work, there was no commercial traffic, and it was horrible. So, there has to be a balance, not, I mean, my opinion, not waiting for rain, and I'm not on the township or the council, but waiting for rain to try to solve the problem, it's not a, and I'm sure you guys get the, the chemical cheaper than what I see it on Amazon.
Still costs, I remember Jim, what were you?
I understand it costs, but what's the cost gonna be if somebody gets hurt out there?
Well, what I was gonna say is, reducing the speed limit may not help the road condition all that much, it may not help the dust, but it can control some, it helps with the public safety. Because if you're going slower, you got a little more time to react, if there's a kid running after a ball out in the road or whatever.
Or all of us are gonna follow.
Yeah, they don't go twenty-five miles, they go fifty, and we get twenty-five cars going by in a minute, and so, no amount of speed reduction is gonna change that. You need to begin to solve this problem, and not just temporary, but solve, is the blue township?
Yes, I believe so.
Then how is it that Wall got paved all the way along, or is part of it not paved?
No, it's just the bridge.
Yeah.
No, that's up to them.
But, let's, let's take a look at this map and kinda.
This is the bridge, at the end of the blue is the bridge, and so that's paved over there, and all this is gravel.
Yeah.
But that, it ends, the city, the city street ends with the bridge, then it's township, and then it's a mix. I'm just saying, you know, legislating the speed, legislating morality, it, it's not gonna solve the dust problem, 'cause you can, uh, right when I got home from work, there was somebody sitting out in front of our house, I don't know, Minnesota place. But, uh, when I got out of my truck and walked into the house, there were five landscaped vehicles with trailers, and they weren't speeding, they were going at a reasonable pace, and then there was a few just vehicles behind them. And it was as bad as it is when the dirtwork trucks are hauling over there, so, to me, you know, speed isn't the, it's gotta be, it's gotta be a combination of, of speed and something applied to that road to keep that dust down.
Well, I know it sounds a little like a cop-out, and you might not be a hundred percent wrong, but if you had to bet, when has, can anybody remember a May and June without getting rain? That is our rainy season, there's a lot of years where it's so wet.
But this is where we are now.
Yeah, we're here.
And if we get rain in two days, we are screwed. That's.
It will only last.
We can't win. We can't win.
It has to be an ongoing thing, not just once.
What is the township, and this is the, the catch twenty-two that I run into, because I, I really appreciate you coming in and giving us some perspective, especially several of us that are new. We're kind of getting up to speed on this very, very quickly.
Well, the, the way we see this, with May and June being normal wet months, and granted, we've got a dry spring, but if you had to bet, I'd still say we're gonna get some rain sooner or later, I mean, to make the whole month, but how do you?
What is your capability as a township to?
Minimal.
Maintain something like this, and technical dust control and grading and things like that, because we're getting an awful lot of commentary back.
We do, we contract with, with, um.
Glacier.
Mr. Biffert, no, doesn't that?
Glacier.
Glacier puts it on, but then Dave Volcom is the one that blades it before they put it on.
Okay. Did you guys put on one after?
We have no equipment, none. It's all rented, it's all hired.
You did one or two applications last year?
We did one.
Just one, okay.
It was, it was later in the year, but we got a nice rain, we bladed it, got a shape, got the holes filled, and then we put it on. We had a couple rains after that, and we got calls complaints saying it was too slippery, which, you get that too, you know, you kinda got a little trade-off there, and it's right.
Have, have, have we had any of that, 'cause I, I know that
Yeah.
we were involved at one point in time with dust control in different areas, what is the feedback when we put dust control down?
So when we've put dust control down, it was back when we had the construction of the roundabout seventy-six, and the detour route went out to eighty-first and then down to Wall. And we applied dust control, it happened to be a rainy year, the road conditions, the road became very slick, it pitted, you got a lot of potholes, or little potholes, like the size of your fist, or a little bigger. And it made it to where you could barely go about five miles an hour before feeling like you're sliding off the road. Uh, also, we had complaints from people, residents, uh, about the mud or the calcium chloride mixed in with the gravel caking onto their cars, and they couldn't get it off. They couldn't get it off with multiple car washes, so they were asking the city to provide car washes to them. So we were having complaints from the slick road, rough road conditions, if you apply the dust control, the more you blade the road, that dust control goes away.
The less effective.
And less effective it is, so.
So you're damned if you do, damned if you don't?
Yes.
Yes, and right now, KPH is dropping water on my road seven times a day to try to keep up. If you can imagine that, seven loads a day of water, and it's still not enough.
Water.
And that, I'm sure it adds up.
Yeah.
We don't see water.
We don't see water sprinkling as, it is a Band-Aid at best.
Does seven times a day keep up in the seat?
Uh, towards the end of the day, no. But I mean, areas of the road are very wet where they are, are now soft. And obviously the main part of the road is, is better, but it all depends on, like you said, the KPH trucks right now are following the speed limit. I can promise you the other ones, not even close, so.
Here, here's a thought, and I don't know if it's, it's worth anything. We have a couple neighborhood associations around the township. They voluntarily pay for their own, we've told them, we can't justify putting dust control down in your neighborhood. We do maintain their roads by contract, but if they wanna put the dust control down, we say fine. We, we don't, you know, we don't prohibit them from doing so. They pay for it and I'm guessing it's kind of working. We don't hear many complaints from-
We did these that have paid for the old paving worked well. We, we maintain the snow, but we don't maintain the paving.
What about the dust control? We've used, they've done that-
We haven't done that anywhere else. Wall Avenue is a special case.
I thought we had one or two neighborhoods that used dust-
Not since I've been there.
I, I think there has been one or two, but they do it when they feel like it's warranted, you know, and it's, Mr. Bifford has been with us for about a year, year and a half, so he hasn't a long, got a long tenure with the township. And, uh, I know we've used it in a couple occasions where they've chose to put it down and we let them and it works to a degree. Apparently they don't like the expense, so they don't do it every year, so we're back to the other one.
So legally then, we have to have ownership of the road in order to pave it? Is that what I'm understanding?
If you wanna put dust control down on our road, we'll let you.
But we can't do it by paying for it.
For dust control?
Yes.
So what I put up here too, I asked Jim to prepare a map. Jim and I and our public works supervisor, we sat down last week and looked at the different gravel roads that we have in town that if you were to apply dust control to Wall Avenue, other areas where we've had complaints from individuals about dust, so you'd highly encourage you to look at this. Uh, or look at these other areas too. So, uh, Jeff mentioned here Seventy Second. Uh, that's a stretch there on the south end of Horace here. KPH is out there putting water down cause their rain trucks constantly, but that's one area-
These are all areas where we've received complaints about dust?
Where we've had different complaints for dust to where if you were to put it down for Wall Avenue, we'd be recommending to you to consider these other locations too. And it comes out to just under twenty-six thousand linear feet of dust control that would have to be applied.
What does that cost? Ballpark.
Ballpark.
Anywhere from forty-one thousand to fifty-five thousand?
For one application.
For one application.
And that doesn't count water if you have to put it down before you put the calcium chloride or the calcium chloride.
It could easily get up, you know, into that sixty, seventy by the time like Wall, you might have to do two or three applications depending on the year.
And every time you blade it-
Water trucks, different things like that.
And the gates.
Yes. So- One thing you'll notice on this map too is there are no cul-de-sacs dead ends. These are all through streets. These are areas where they do receive traffic. Yep, yep. And nothing on the industrial park.
You have to think about doing it for all of those roads.
In essence, if the township, or to the township part of the road, if they actually annex us.
If, if, if the city of Horace annexes both sides of the road, then they by default get the road. And then it's no longer under our responsibility or our ability to control it. And it is then the, the city's responsibility and expense to maintain it. And I think it, it doesn't, it behooves anybody who's familiar with this situation. The solutions are sometimes vague, difficult. You're depending on Mother Nature, which nobody can depend on. Paving it is the, really the solution that behooves this amount of traffic on the road. And that is expensive in itself. So it's gonna cost or it's gonna cost. It's just that how good of a solution do we get for our dollar? And I, for, as far as the township is concerned, this road is a, an exception to all our rules. We are not set up, we are not funded, we are not, don't have the equipment to take care of a road. This is really behaving much more like a city road than a, than a township road. And, you know, as far as we're concerned, we would be just happy as heck if this mediation thing came to an end and you guys annexed the road. Great, that's just one less headache. But we can't help you, that's the problem. It seems like our hands are tied. And whatever solution we pick, Mother Nature goes against us and we get kicked in the butt again.
I just have to say, the residents, the existing residents along the wall are being punished for the mistakes that the city council made, was it five years ago? When you approved this development with no improvements to the, of gravel, a country gravel road. He didn't have to pay a dime. Now, you're trying to force the, or the, or the residents that are, maybe in their years and never had a bit of problem. The road was always fine. It's been in the past five years when they said, oh, we're not gonna start for at least three years and they broke ground that fall. So we have sat on Wall Avenue because that's my place that runs along the whole thing on one side. Not the whole thing, I don't mean to. Anyway, I've seen it day after day. And now you're gonna make us pay to make improvements to a road that we didn't leave, we didn't give, we weren't given a chance to even input and they threw this development at the end.
You had no input when the Lost River development came through? Is that correct?
There was a public input meeting. At the time, we were told that they've never forced annex anybody to the city and they never will. That's true.
And yeah, it wasn't you, but it was a representative of the city. And now here we are.
And maybe these are two different things, annexation versus trying to-
It is.
It is.
It is.
But it is.
Well, it is, for this, to take this part of discussion, it is.
Yeah. I, I want to understand where we were and being new, I have no control over what happened five years ago. I, I don't doubt the mistakes for me. And I'm hearing that from a lot of different people or that things could have been done differently. What we're forced with now is what are we gonna do now? And how are we gonna work with the township who, thank God you came and gave me a different perspective tonight? Cause that's the first I've heard of that. Um, also, what can we do now that we've got all these people out there going back and forth and all this construction? And all of these people that have been there? We've had discussions on Wall and I know that some of those discussions went completely the wrong direction. So we're trying to restart these discussions and really wipe the slate clean and start over. And we're trying to get a really good picture of how we do that and still maintain, uh, respect for the folks that have been there for a long time while trying to accommodate others that have a need for something different. You know, it, it's a really big balancing act. And that's where we need your help to say, okay, we realize we wanna do something with Wall. Right now, we're struggling a little bit with the jurisdictional lines, but I, I'm hoping and praying that that will work itself out within the next couple of weeks. I know that although not perfect, I personally and several others here have put a lot of time and effort into trying to work out some choice in agreements. Not everyone likes the choice, but we're trying very hard to come up with something. There are some things that we can do and there's some things that we can't do. And there's some things that the state won't allow us to do in century code and everything else. Um, so I'm gonna ask for, what is the short-term solution? Because I was out to your place, the dust was ridiculous. I couldn't breathe, it was difficult. The speeds is a great start. That's, that's a, a good start. But do we look at the possibility of not only the speeds and the enforcement together? Do we look at an actual dust control application? Do we spend that money or do we take that and put it into a more permanent solution? Because I tell you what, folks, if it was as simple as just putting blacktop on top of this road, it would already be done. It's not that simple. This road has been deteriorated, there is conditioning that is needed, we have to take down a few feet of road. I mean, it's not as simple as, oh, here's a couple hundred thousand dollars, go put some asphalt on top of it. If it was, trust me, that would have been a no-brainer. We're at a, we're at a crossroads here. And we're at a point where we need to really look at, A, how we're gonna fund it, um, without punishing people necessarily and including the right people, right? Cause there's a number of different entities here. What's a realistic plan? We don't need a, what I call the Taj Mahal, but we need something better than a Pinto because it has to last more than a year or two, right? So I, I, I'm looking for suggestions. Do you want us to put, to work with the township? Put dust control on this thing? Spend that money, that fifty thousand dollars, we'll just say? Or do we do some sort of temporary means? Get a water truck out there, slow down speeds and put that money into a more permanent solution? I saw a hand in the back of the room.
Yes, I'm Ira from Five-O-One Westbrook.
Yes.
And what is the cost of just doing Westbrook though? Is that what we came here to discuss? Not all the literally miles of gravel roads that you'd like to do, but specifically Westbrook? What's the actual cost? And why couldn't the township and the city split that cost? So neither one picks a big hit on it or does a roll on it? And get that done at least for the next few months? Because I walk out there every morning, I have lots of pictures. Literally sometimes you can't see good enough to walk across the road. Somebody's eventually gonna be killed, it's a miracle. Mr. Zam, they're sitting right up there. One morning, his young son ran over, if I would have been there. Cause on the corner coming out of Westbrook, somebody was going fast and couldn't see anything. You couldn't see from me to the mayor. And his son was there, so I jumped out of the roadway like that, so the guy swerved and almost went in the ditch.
Good God.
So how much money's that worth? Human life's pretty expensive to be just worried about a few thousand dollars. And I mean, I realize, yeah, you're talking twenty, thirty grand at the most to do that Westbrook thing for navigation. Raid it, water it and do it. End of story. Cause last year, it made a hundred percent difference. And I'm outside almost every day. I live there, I do my gardening and those kind of things out there. It made a huge difference once it put the dust control down.
Well, I think we're talking a little bit further than just Westbrook. We're talking about going all the way past Lost River.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay. Cause I thought maybe you were just talking about your section.
Well, you're, right.
Okay, keep going. I have, I do have a question too. I, I'm Kelly Carlson, I'm the one who started the-
Hello, Kelly!
Thank you. There is the whole soybean, soybean oil. Stephanie Sinner with the North Dakota Soybean Association can give a whole bunch of information on that. If you do not wanna go with the, um, calcium chloride, I don't know what the difference is. I don't know what, you know, they say it's a better impact on the road, better impact on your cars, health, support the whole, um, farmers, et cetera.
How long does it last is my question?
I don't know any of that. Um, I found the article. Stephanie Sinner with, um, the North Dakota Soybean. Or you can go to ndsoygrowers.com, page ten is their board.
North Dakota, ndsoygrowers.com.
Page ten.
Page ten. I'm curious because I looked up a couple different alternatives myself. There are not just calcium chloride, but I also looked up a magnesium chloride, which unfortunately won't work in our temperatures right now because it evaporates too quickly. Um, I looked up some polymers just to see if there was something else that wouldn't eat the chrome and the wiring and the brakes on people's vehicles and pit their concrete in their driveways. I mean, good God, how much do y'all spend for concrete, you know, for your driveway? And then you find, put the, an application of this down and it drips off of your car. Not only has it eaten your car, but now it's pitting your driveway. You know, I mean, I'm just sick about something like that. Not nearly as sick as I am when you talk about a kid almost getting hit. And it terrifies me, the fact that this stuff gets slick and greasy when it rains and people can go off the road in an area where you're right by the curve of river. I mean, you wanna talk about treacherous, it just doesn't get more treacherous than that. So I'm open to an alternative product, but we as a council have to make some decisions here. And if, uh, if a short-term solution is some, some simple dust control on that particular section, where does it stop? Who, who do we tell who else has had complaints? That we say, no, you don't get it, but these guys do? I don't know that answer right now. And, and I could use some input on that.
Yep.
But at the same token, if we put that down, we need to come up with a more permanent solution. And I, I can tell you, it needs to be something more than just a cap on that road. And I want everybody to understand-
If you put it down tomorrow, if you make an agreement, then you'll do some damage eventually. I mean, we have no problem putting it down. We've expanded our budget four to five times this year just for that road. And it's less than a couple thousand dollars per ton.
Oh, yeah, one-
That's about what a light is worth. That's about right.
And, and this is definitely not a total solution, but I thought I heard at one point in time that, uh, construction crews were supposed to come from the north. So if we changed the load restrictions on Wall Avenue, they would be forced to go around and use-
I did check on that, actually.
That's what the township wants.
Yes, I, I checked on that because one of the comments on your post, kindly, was how come the construction traffic is now coming down Wall? And actually, um, the feedback that I had gotten, and correct me if I'm wrong, was that during the detour, during the construction of the roundabout, they were told, yes, they had to come on Seventy-S sixth over and down to the, on the west side, right? But once that changed, once that construction was done, then there's no limitation on the-
A, a lot of that construction traffic was when, uh, the contractors for the roundabout and also when we had Lost River Fifth, the development going in, that addition going in, we were able to control that contractor's path a lot easier because they are under contract with us. These individuals are home, these are home builders going in, building homes, concrete trucks, dump trucks, different things like that. We don't have a contract with them to be able to say, hey, you guys need to go this way. Uh, we also do have weight restrictions on there. They're able to get permits to be on the road. So they get, but some contractors wait to see if restrictions would lift. Others will go a different way and sometimes they'll get a permit. Uh, others will try to roll the dice and hope that they don't get caught. Uh, sometimes they get caught, sometimes they don't. Uh, but we, uh, I said, we do have weight restrictions on the road. It's treated as a six-ton road. They have options though of being able to get six tons per axle. They're able to spread that load by putting, you know, trucks with more axles down. Uh, that does more, more beat up on the road at times though and you have more tires going on the road. And if they're going fast, that'll make it washboard quicker, so, yep.
And that washboard is nothing to shake a stick at. And if you put this stuff down, it's gonna get worse.
Yep.
That's, that's like your, how do you?
Seriously?
I've had my car shake all the way down.
Well, I was just told we've got some tools for sale on our ditch. We gotta pick up after the meeting. We just stuff.
Quick, question in the back.
I've chased him down one fifty.
Yeah, my name's John Carlson, Kelly's husband. I just had two questions.
John, yes, hello.
Yeah, hi. Um, one, I apologize, we came late. I don't know if this is already addressed, but what is the status of the annexation of that road? And then two, we were in here over a year ago and there was a proposal put together for the pavement of that road. Or there may be one or two different proposals. So I was wondering what the status of that is? If the annexation goes through, then can we use one of those proposals to pave that road? Then we gotta go and figure out who's gonna pay for it. But I believe that all these fixes for the gravel are temporary fix and it's not gonna be long term. There's four hundred houses going in there, the traffic's only gonna get worse. It's not sustainable why I drafted it. It has to be looked at to be paved. I'm just wondering, you guys aren't getting the work in that, you know, for the proposal over a year ago? What happened with it?
You wanna take that one, Corey?
Well, just, okay, so-
We would have liked to have been doing it this-
Yeah, so what, what's going on right now with the annexation is we've got some agreements in front of different, uh, individuals from the Apple Orchard, Westbrook and then the Lazy Eighth. It's a proposal to see if we can avoid mediation. If everybody signs off on that, then we'll avoid mediation. Um, and then we'll probably get back at looking at the road again or how we're gonna do that. Basically bring back those proposals and see what's still valid or if we gotta change some things. We talked about that. There's some, that road base underneath there is almost like pudding. Um, there might have to be some re, more reinforcements put on that. We're just, that's part of what we're gonna be going through.
And, and that has something to do with the close proximity to the river, which complicates this further. And so there's a lot more to this on the, the civil engineering side that people really understand. Um, we have gotten many of the agreements back from the Apple Orchard. Um, we have gotten many of the agreements back from the Apple Orchard, I believe there's two still.
I believe we have two or three.
Standing, those folks were out of town, so they still have to be discussed. Um, Westbrook, I believe you guys are in process. Let us, letting us know what you're gonna do on that. Um, and La-Z-E, I need an update on.
We've talked with Scott. Scott, I need to catch up with you again.
Um, so that's where we're at with that. And then, like I said, if we can avoid mediation, things will start moving along a little quicker. If it goes to mediation, we're still probably about a month or two, maybe even longer, I would say.
But the earliest you're talking to pave that road is next year.
Yeah, yeah, it won't be this year.
Drew? Well, I was thinking, though, somebody mentioned over here too, I don't know if it's a possibility, is it possible back after the developer to pay for some of these costs, paving the road? Or that already is done, deal.
That's something that we've already had some discussion on. We run into some difficulty, um, and, and I'll explain it as it was explained to me as a new member, and, and maybe it'll make more sense to you. I understand that some differences changed after such times the developer already had some plans in. So, it's difficult at this point in time to go back after the developer. However, I believe that we have a due diligence to do so. And I believe that this particular developer, in adding all these different phases out there, would be best suited to have an interest in working with the city and with the local residents in order to continue the development that they are looking to add to. So, I will tell you my position on that. Um, what we can and cannot enforce, we have to have some discussions with legal, obviously with the mayor, with Brenton and whatnot. But I can tell you that that is of significant interest to me.
Mister, Mister Mayor, can I just add to that?
Got it.
So we're talking about going after the developer on this stuff. It's not going after the developer to pay for the cost. Any property that benefits from the project, they would be included in the improvement district and the, the special assessment and the city council will then determine, uh, how much their special will be allocated towards their property. So, in terms of this project, you know, we're talking about Wall Avenue. Well, those properties likely would all be included in that improvement district. So, we start going after the developer, uh, that's not really a thing here. It's, it's including the property.
Including their properties, developed or undeveloped?
Correct.
Into the improvement district. So we do have a method to our madness.
Correct.
What's the current policy now? If a new development comes in, what's the current policy towards developers? If a new development, let's say I wanted to put one in further east of town, would I have to pay for the improvements to get to that new development?
It completely depends on the development, its location, what improvements it has included. Uh, some of them have just local improvements, some have regional improvements. Uh, so it just depends on, on that development and, and where it's located, uh, as far as if there's any property that is not included in the city. Um, and so, again, variables that just play into it. If it's a development that's fully within the city, uh, and there's just local improvements there, uh, those costs are maintained on that development.
So.
What does that mean? I, I didn't understand that.
So basically, if, if there's a section like for this area here, we could, we typically would not force a developer in, to dev- or pave a road that's not in city limits. But, portion that would be in city limits, we had Tyler can say, and okay, it has to be paved. So if you take like Wall Avenue, for example, to the east, additions have been, add-on to development, expand to the east. Every time the developer adds addition, that development is responsible for the additional pavement along Wall Avenue. However, in this section here, we have a section from the bridge to just before the entrance of Lost River and River's Edge that is not in the city, and therefore we wouldn't be tying their hands for paving that.
Okay.
So, and if you're looking.
Lucas, forgive me, you're, you're too smart for me, man. I'm trying to keep up with ya, and I know that there's a lot of ins and outs to this, and the, the whole township versus city thing complicates it even further.
And why wasn't Lost River paved, that section?
I can't answer that question, I wasn't here at the time. I, to, to give you a fair answer, I can't tell you that, cause I don't have the answer for you.
I think we can all agree that if we were to go back and do it over again, things would've done, been done differently. I mean, who can say what that would look like? Nobody. So we just have to look at where we're at now. And the road is a disaster, and I'm a block off that road and I'm gonna have to pay for it. And I don't even have to drive on it if I don't want to. This is a community and we're all part of it, and we need to support each other. Simple as that.
I get that.
There's massive assessment district boundary differences, like Chris mentioned, between Terragard and Wall. I don't know, it doesn't sit right away for me to say, well, we missed our opportunity over here, so we're gonna, we're gonna build a half-mile-wide assessment box around Wall Avenue West now to fix it up.
None of that has been decided, and even Sarah just said, we totally understand the, the frustration.
So has the assessment district that was approved, then, um, what would the, I don't know, the council action would be? The motion to approve that assessment district hasn't been revised, the motion? Or how does, I don't know how that works from a council level?
It's not even a project right now yet, is it?
The assessment district was approved in January of twenty twenty.
The district was created.
No, they, the city decides the table, so nothing's happened with that. Likely what's gonna happen is the city, if it wants, can rescind that resolution, start over. I don't know where the city's at with that, but again.
We haven't come back to that in a while.
Everything kinda went on hold, so.
Guys, we're way off target here. We weren't gonna talk about assessments tonight, cause that wasn't what we're, otherwise we'd have been a little bit more prepared for that this evening, we're not.
Drew's been waiting for a minute.
Drew, go ahead.
Just, I just have one, I have several, I want to put one that's slightly pertinent. Would you mind putting the map up that shows the sort of hodgepodge of ownership? And I would bring everyone's attention and remind them that even after the annexation where to go through with La-Z-E and Westbrook, you see that the horse park is not part of that annexation, and it's still gonna be partially owned by the township and the city. So I'm curious as to how that particular wrinkle is being solved? If the city actually has to own all the road to do anything, which is not accurate, how does that handle?
We're having conversations with the horse park about this right now, but their ag land, we gotta treat that a little differently than what, uh, you guys have residential.
I answered a couple times, but I just, I just wanna bring everyone's attention that even after mediation and annexation of problems that are being played, the majority of the road is still not owned by the city.
Okay.
Just go ahead.
Okay, so, what's the solution for this?
So we get, let's go back a little bit, guys, on seventeen here. Um, do we wanna look at doing?
Yes.
A reduction on the speed on the road for now? And Todd, you'd be okay with that, if we go along with that?
I don't think you're gonna find any opposition.
No, I.
We don't have to live with it, so.
I mean, as long as the, the deputies are willing to enforce it, and.
Mayor, are you gonna pull this out again? I don't think there's any signs up there right now.
There's, there's.
There are, yes.
We're faded.
I, I drove it to confirm.
Yeah, covered dust, let's go wash him off once.
I think we need some large signs, some, some of those flashing, whatever we can do to get the police, to the sheriffs to sit out there.
And to, for it to be noticed by the public, cause like people didn't even know the sign's there. So I mean, we, we need to have.
I guess, well, at one time they had posted up one of those radar things, you see how fast? It became a game. You know, it used to be like physical, in-person enforcement, because that was set just kitty-cornered our property. And it was like, just to see what you could get for a high schooler. The actual, just the unit that sits there?
Yeah.
Is an enforcement. It's a game.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you gotta slow down to twenty-five.
But.
But we have to start somewhere.
We have to do something, so let's, so.
I know this isn't the topic, but lower the axle weight down to a car is what the township has wanted for a long time.
Yes.
Force them to go north. If they don't come north, give them a ticket.
It, it should've been.
Lower it down, like to a car or like pickup, whatever that is.
When that bridge was built, they said construction was not supposed to be on that road, on that bridge.
But at the same time, you do the speed, I mean, we'll, all paper design, if you want to pay for it. I have no problem lowering the axle weight down to, you guys' excuse is they had more axles. Put a number of axles on there if you want. Put anything on there, put my base on there, your phone number, your phone number.
Forty thousand pound gross weight.
Jim, what was the deal on that? We looked, we looked into that, what was?
There really was. Just, you need to put in a permit or put it in the policy, so it's enforceable.
Yeah.
Cause originally, posted it, there wasn't a penalty or a permit process.
Maybe that was it. Keep in mind that township will have to do the same thing.
Yes.
Right.
Okay, so, I think we need to do that.
Okay, let's do it.
Okay. All right, so who wants, somebody wanna make a proposal about?
I will make the motion.
Okay, what do you wanna do?
To go ahead and reduce the speed limit.
Okay.
And follow that.
What do you guys want it to be?
What do you want it to be?
It's already twenty-five.
It's already twenty-five, so.
At least fifteen, I mean, do you want it ten?
No, fifteen would be good.
Okay, so fifteen.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Take it down to fifteen, okay. So we'll make a motion to take it down to fifteen. Also, the signage that goes with that. Obviously, we can't tell people what to do, but please help us enforce it.
Okay.
And then, uh, what do we wanna do with the axles there, Jim?
Gross vehicle weight.
Take the gross vehicle weight down on that road?
The axle, I'll be, I've got to look at all the policies written for the overweight, cause right now you get a permit for anything over six tons.
Yeah.
So we have to, if we're gonna limit that, we have to look at the policy as a whole, make sure we can still do that.
Is there any way to do temporary until we get the road in time?
The road just can't handle this.
And it can see penalties.
Yeah, you get into, I, if you're to do anything with the axle weight, the council I believe could do restrictions on it. It would not be effective in, until we'd have it signed. We would not be able to, the deputies would not be able to enforce it until signed. And then also, we would probably wanna reach out to all the different individuals that have pulled out permits in the past, just say, hey, there's a change to, uh, restrictions on this road.
I'll help make the calls.
And there are a couple of residents out there that have larger trucks.
And there's also a business to the west. So I mean, that's, and that's where the policy actually goes into place. So if you wanted us to visit the weight restrictions, what I encourage you to do is, staff, we could go look at, we could look at that, try to work with the sheriff's department on that element, and then come back to council. Like, but like I said, there's a lot of different variables on that part.
Yeah, I agree.
And if you make a decision.
If we reduce that, now we'll work with you then.
Send me an email so that we can put it before the township and get it ratified, so that our rules agree with your rules.
That's what I mean, we'll stay in touch with you guys then, while we get this squared away. Okay. Let's do that then, let's work on that policy and try and get that updated, guys.
I wanna make sure that we're not prohibiting people that have a pickup with just a small, like eight or ten-foot enclosed trailer.
And.
Or even a horse track, or a horse park.
Right.
Well, and, and that's the thing, you have, like I said, you have businesses there, you have the horse park, you have a contractor to the west there. So, that's why I encourage you, if we did anything, it would be a discussion of look at updating the policy to address that one area, just cause there's so many other ramifications that could happen that we encourage you not to have that decision.
That's fair.
To make that decision tonight.
All right, we'll limit the motion.
We never give out a road permit for any weight, so there should be anybody on our side that should get to go down there. We don't give out road permits for those extra weights, at all.
Doesn't mean that they don't roll the dice, but I get it.
They call us.
Do they?
Say, no. And then if they call us back, we say, you have to repair the road, and if we make them repair the road, that's how the township is, by the way.
Can we do that?
Well, the city has, we have our policy, like I said, I would encourage us to look at our policy.
Let's just.
Okay.
Okay, so your motion is to reduce the speed limit down to fifteen?
I will second.
Okay. Naomi does a second on that. Pick, put up her vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Gina, so do that, we'll drop the, work with you on signs, I suppose they're in your jurisdiction, we can get you the signs, we'll get that.
You're gonna say axle weight, like thirty-five hundred pounds, two axles, seven thousand pound pickup? That's kind of convenient, common standard.
We'll work on that with the policy then.
They're, they're.
We gotta make sure for the horse park, folks, that we're not reducing something too much there.
And people that have businesses that might pull.
Yeah, I wanna make sure.
Trailer.
I think a hard look at thirty-five hundred pounds, because horse, horse trailers, we have several, they have extra axles. So it kinda comes out to thirty-five hundred pounds per axle, is it common?
There, there are a lot of variables that go into play with like overweight permits of not just number axles, you have tire size. Uh, there's just a lot of variables, tire width and size overall, so that's why I encourage us to look at the policy as a whole, not just one item.
Okay, so on to number eighteen, what do you guys wanna do about the dust control?
Well, I mean, they said that they would lay it.
Yeah, we'll pay out, we'll be paid out.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm okay putting it down, I just want everybody to understand, if we start getting wet. We start getting wet, you know the phone calls are gonna take.
What'd you say? Is that for the calcium chloride only, or would you be looking at soybean as well?
We've been going from the bridge all the way up to the corner.
Would you be open to soybean?
Would you be open to the toss of soybean oil?
You can change it if you want.
We're, we're waiting to hear back, but, okay.
Yeah, let me know, otherwise it's been raining tonight, we're putting her on tomorrow morning. That's what we're doing.
Well, yeah, if we get rain tonight, there's no more rain in the forecast.
There's no rain in the forecast for a while.
I mean, I think when you're looking at the community as a whole for dust control, we have to look at the, the safety aspect of the kids in this particular situation. This is an extreme case, and if there's a label we can put on it, if it gets to be to an extent, then we put down the dust control or something along those lines there. I mean, the safety of this road has just made me sick, and I've been talking about it since I got on here. And I feel for you guys immensely. I can't imagine living on that road. It's absolutely horrible. So, I mean, I think whatever you guys wanna do, to an extent, obviously, money is a concern, and that money is being paid by city residents that are in the city. So, it's important for us to, you know, keep that in mind.
So Todd, that's worked, so we split, split the cost and?
But it's the rest of the community as well, it's not just Lost River.
Make it happen?
You know, I mean.
We're gonna be meeting now on the third Tuesday of each month.
Third Tu- okay.
Instead of the second, we had some conflicts, we gotta change our agenda. So, just send it to me before then, we'll ratify it at our next meeting.
Okay.
And then we'll be all be on the same page as of about the twenty-third or twenty-fourth of the month.
Gotcha, all right, we'll do that. So are you guys okay with the dust control?
Now, is this dust control just on this road, or is it the map that was up here?
Just on that road. Now, we've been getting safety calls on that road, so that's what we're doing.
So I would, I would say for the city though, we have had, we have been getting complaints about all these other roads. So the overall discussion about dust control on the agenda is dust control on gravel roads. So we're looking at it as a city holistic, if you wanna look at just Wall, you could discuss Wall. We will get, continue to get complaints about dust on these other streets. So I would ask you to consider, are you going to consider these other streets?
So, here's the deal though, this is, this is a little different ballgame, because we got the township involved with this one, so that's why Wall has to be handled differently.
Yeah.
So, I'm fine with putting, you know, splitting the cost, then we get that one done on Wall. We can talk about the rest of the town at another time, I think, for right now, but we've got some safety concerns, we got issues on Wall. I think we should put down some, work with the township.
One of the things, and I probably don't need to tell you this, but you could very well be opening a Pandora's box.
Oh, I know.
And, we dig our heels in and are difficult to deal with on purpose, because we know this road is an exception, and we have no intention of letting, letting everybody else who wants it in the township have it because of the cost. So we, we are very careful, and I expect you'll have the same problem.
I just appreciate you working with us, Todd, I appreciate you working with us through this one, cause this is not, not a simple task.
Well, it's one time, right? If we do it again, we discuss it again, so.
Mister Mayor, the other issue you have is all those nice trees overhanging the road. And the sheriff's department has worked with us on timing and dust settling. Those trees prohibit a lot of that, and they're really nice, and that's why you want them there, but the trees kinda block the dust from blowing away, like as if you were.
Right.
In the township somewhere.
Right.
So that's another issue, which is a really nice issue to have, because you have all this nice shade.
Mm-hmm.
But it does cause some dust not blowing away.
Correct.
Sheriff's department has timed it, and has contacted us several times in the past over that.
Yeah, and I know it's really still at night, I mean, it just turns into a dust alley, I know. Even the mosquitoes can't see everybody, you know? Thanks, Todd. Okay. So what do you guys wanna do about the dust control?
Just doing Wall, then?
I think, I think.
Unless you wanna do others, but.
Are we doing to the first entrance, or how far are we doing on this road? Are we doing to the first entrance, or how far are we doing on this road, I mean?
I was figuring to the first entrance, but that's what they did last time.
So first entrance, one application, anything beyond that, we'll see how this goes, we'll see how it goes over.
Well, because they got to apply the water to it and everything like that, to make sure it sticks, so.
I, I would.
Right, if we don't get rain?
I'd like to add that a lot of our complaints on wall, some are for this area, some are adjacent to Lost River. So it's, we have, we have received quite a few complaints from individuals about dust over in the Lost River development in Riverside, so.
But that was, you know, like, the last time the township did it, I think they just did it from?
The township did just the township portion, but if you're doing wall avenue, are you going to do all wall, or a lot, the gravel portion, adjacent to Lost River and teaming up with the township, or just the township portion?
I have a little, little less, um, sympathy for the people that are, that built in Lost River, because they already, you know, they knew what they were getting, you know?
To some degree, I think they'd been told that that road is going to be paved a lot earlier than it currently looks.
And that, that's something that also came out, that, that I found out that I did not know, that a lot of these folks were told by realtors and whatnot, that this road was going to be paved, and wow, the misinformation out there was astounding to me.
Where do you think that information came from, if the realtors were telling them?
I don't know.
I can tell you, we don't make it up.
Yeah.
Because we get some if we make it up.
Right, and we're not, we're not here, that's not why we're here, just point fingers, I mean, um, we don't know who said what, or if it got misconstrued. The road is going to get paved as the goal, so that is true. When? Hopefully soon.
Yeah, hopefully next year, that's what the goal is.
Okay.
So, what about the, you guys want to do about the dust control, and we can go all, we can go to the second entrance, I guess, you know, because that would help.
It's up to council how far you would like to go, I'm just letting you know that we, for complaints about wall avenue and dust, we have gotten complaints from not just the township portion, but we've gotten complaints the whole stretch of wall.
Well, if we're going up to the first entrance, good God, drive the extra eighth of a mile to the second entrance.
Yeah, that's what I mean, we could just as well go to the second entrance.
Just be done with it.
Okay, so I'll make that motion to the second entrance, dust control, one, one, um, application. Now, if it doesn't rain, then we're putting water down with it?
That's what he was talking about, so we can coordinate that with him, just to make sure that's, because you got to put down water, get that stuff to activate, otherwise you're just wasting it, so.
For sure. Um, if it, if it rains, we put the, we put the salt down, if it doesn't rain, we look into the soybean oil tonight, yeah?
You want to look at that, I mean, that's fine.
Well, I think we should look into it as an option, for sure, but if, we might only get one chance of rain.
If we only get one chance of rain, we might have to go with it.
Yeah, because I mean, if it rains tonight, they're going to put down the chemical.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the plan.
You guys okay with that?
Okay, so.
You're going to make a motion?
Yep, I have that motion, do we say it?
Try it again, just so everybody understands.
Okay, so a motion to apply one, um, round of dust control with water, if it doesn't rain, all the way to the second entrance of Lost River.
On wall avenue.
On wall. Okay, Chelsea, you made a motion, get a second?
I will second.
There's a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries, all right. We'll let Todd know that tomorrow, so let's move back to number eight. Ross, once you start.
I'll go back to number eight.
Yep, we had to rewind it back, I thought you were being done.
Good evening, everybody. I'll just go over the monthly report really quick, I'm not sure if it's in the PowerPoint or not, we got to kind of late. Um, one hundred and thirty-six calls for service this month. Large numbers in there, traffic stop related or citation related, twenty-five citations, fourteen warnings, uh, two parking warnings, no parking citations. Deputy Keller wrote a nice piece here in the paragraph, so I'll read this to you. Um, with nicer weather, there's a large uptick in the number of off-highway vehicles being operated on city streets. Time is spent through traffic stops educating the operators and occupants of the off-highway vehicles, and on the laws permitting to off-highway vehicles, no citations were issued. Citizens are encouraged to visit Park, the Park Rec website to learn more on the OHV laws and safety guidelines, there's also a free youth course tomorrow at the Forest Lutheran Church. Uh, if anyone has a youngster aged twelve to fifteen that they want to sign up for that to get their safety certificate, so they can legally ride on city streets with a properly registered insured vehicle, of course. Uh, they can attend that course tomorrow morning at ten. Um, most schools should be out, I believe, so it's a pretty convenient time, and it shouldn't be too hot, hopefully, at ten, because I start work at ten and I, I don't sweat well, so hopefully it's not too hot.
Okay.
So then go, then go to the website, that's put on by a few deputies of ours who work at the school resource department and the North Dakota Parks and Rec people, so, that's a good outlet. Few things to go over, um, I'm not sure, I don't think I've seen AEDs in the, in the office here in the city hall, but our office went to new AEDs that we got through a grant, I believe, is that right, Tony? Uh, we got brand-new AEDs through a grant, um, so we have a bunch of old ones that still function properly, um, and they're just kind of sitting around doing no good, so if you guys would like a few at city hall, we have a couple. Brent, I don't know if you have any here or not, you have any different orders?
Really? We don't have any AEDs here?
Not that I know of, I haven't seen them.
So I'll snag two.
Yeah.
And I'll bring two here just to have one at both ends of our very large office over here. So I'll bring two of those in. Um, our annual Night to Night event that got canceled last year, that's usually put on in the second week of August, we're doing it again this year. Um, I'm in the initial planning of that, uh, the city usually contributes, um, money in the form of bicycles and helmets for kids, roughly four to five bicycles and helmets. Um, I'm not sure if that has to get approved through the council, if that's a petty cash thing, or who that goes through, or?
That's typically done administrative level, so mayor.
Yeah.
Can you keep it to yourself?
So we'll just be asking for that again sometime between now and middle of August, no rush on that, just a heads up. Um, so we'll talk about wall avenue, since we're here, and we're talking about it, why not? Um, one gentleman said it, we, you know, we can't be everywhere at all times, um, and you'd be surprised how well people drive when they're coming up on a squad car. Uh, believe it or not, people don't like the speed around me.
Go figure, eh?
Um, I mean, the, the, yeah, weird, the running gag around, I say a lot, I perpetuate it, is Ross doesn't make traffic stops, Ross isn't big on traffic, but, um, rest assured that wall avenue will get attention. Um, I'll put it out to the rest of my deputies, they all spend time in Horace, we have a pretty big county, eleven hundred and seventy-six square miles, did I get that number right? Oh, close. Fourteen hundred square miles to cover, and there's usually three to six deputies on. So if I'm not working, chances are, there's not always someone in Horace, but, um, I'll do our best to have folks who are in the area to kind of come through and spend a little time on wall there. Um, I wish I could be there all the time, I wish I drove a car that didn't stand out, and I wish I could stop every speeder I saw, because I have two young girls, and I used to live at a very busy intersection in Fargo, where everyone ran the four-way stop, and my girl was almost hit a couple times, so.
You got any extra cars sitting around?
No. We don't have a lot of extra anything sitting around, unfortunately, COVID did that to us. Um, but especially when that, when that limit goes down, and I'm not sure, is it going to be twenty all the way to the diversion road, or fifteen all the way to the diversion road? Okay. The only thing I worried about was, if you up the speed limit at all, it can't be more than increments of twenty miles an hour according to the statute, but if we're going to keep it at fifteen all the way through, great. Super simple, um, obviously, we, like you said, we can't do anything until signage is up, so as soon as signage is going up, or if you have a plan for signage going up, let me know. We'll, I'll, we'll hit it hard, and I'll, I'll make sure that folks come down here.
Okay, because that's something we can get to those guys once we know that the public works got the signs up.
Yeah, Public Works will be in touch with the deputies, uh, I know they talk frequently, so they'll know when they're going up.
Yeah, just have Adam give me a shout.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, lastly, I just wanted to highlight a call, one of our categories here is drug-related calls, um, there's not usually a ton of them, um, I can't really attribute that to just because of us, I'm not saying that we see every drug and we stop every crime, but, um, last week, we had a call where Deputy Keller received a call from a citizen, just to his work phone, because he made a connection with the citizen in the city, he said, hey, he lives over in Lost River, he saw a vehicle that looked odd, uh, gentleman slumped over in the seat, one, he was concerned for the gentleman's safety, two, he was concerned about kind of the way the car was parked, it was in the middle of the street. Uh, Deputy Keller made contact with the gentleman, ended up getting a false name, arresting him for that, and then a couple different types of drugs and some paraphernalia. Um, so it's kind of the moral of that story is, you're not tooting our own horn, we just kind of went off what the citizens did, but the citizen made enough of a connection with Deputy Keller to have his number and note to call him when he sees something weird, and that kept that guy from driving, uh, he's got an extensive criminal history, obviously, I won't go too much into details, because it's still an ongoing case. Um, I have no doubt that him being behind the wheel when he was high on that mix of drugs he had would not have been good.
Right.
Um, and he was working down here, um, I don't think he is anymore, I'd imagine, but, uh, so we, we towed his vehicle due to necessity, it was broke down in the middle of the road, uh, ended up bringing him to the hospital due to some suspected consumption, consumption of drugs too, while we were standing next to him, which was fun. Um, but yeah, without that connection that Deputy Keller made with this random citizen, I mean, who knows how he got his number, and got that phone call, uh, we kept someone pretty hazardous off the road and got a little bit of drugs off the street, so I thought that was pretty impressive and pretty commendable to the citizens, I mean, I get calls constantly, I have three voicemails, I haven't answered today, because I was busy and I feel kind of bad. Sorry if anyone's watching or sees this video later, I'll call you back, I promise, but, um, it's just a testament to kind of our office's vision of building that partnership, and it really worked, and it keeps working, so.
It's great to hear.
Excellent. I think this conversation is also just, you know, the more often these types of conversations happen, that's why we have to evaluate, you know, the number of law enforcement that's in our community, and, you know, when is the right time to add another officer or those two.
Well, I know me and Cory have talked about this at length, um, I know him and I would both like to see four of us here right now. Um, I know when I first came here, I've been here for two and a half years now, when I first came here, it was, we need to get a third, um, and then COVID happened, and our county, you know, you guys pay for a deputy, but you don't pay for all of it, you pay about half the price of what it costs for a deputy to be operational in a year. Um, you know, cars, insurances, trainings, all that stuff, uh, so you're getting a pretty, pretty good deal, you basically pay base salary, we take care of everything else, which we're very happy to do, and our commission's very happy to do, but with money being tight and our budget being cut so much over the last year, and then this year, and then going into next year, it had quite a ripple effect. Um, that just wasn't, wasn't possible for many reasons. Um, I have, I have got a bunch of plans in mind, but, you know, I'm, I'm just the guy, I'm not the money guy, right, so, um, I'd be more than happy to put together some sort of proposal. It, unfortunately, to go, to go through anytime soon would involve the city paying quite a bit more money, I think.
Right.
Unless the council changes, has a change of heart and, or budgets free up, I'm not sure, again, that's just skepticism, I'm not really sure about.
I think we're going to have to have more discussions about that, because I don't know, you guys' budget will be due this fall, too.
Right, and I, I, I'm, I'm done after this year, I'm done after December, um, but I'm, I'm very invested in this community, I've been here for, I volunteered for a third year.
Yeah.
So, um, I want to see you guys get, my, my ultimate goal is four deputies and a corporal, I have a Horace division, but again, where's that money coming from? It's a much, much larger conversation than what I'm having right now, and it's much more intricate than what I have any kind of knowledge of, I'm not nearly smart enough. It's, I'm in the same boat, if people talk big, I get wide-eyed and start losing myself, so.
Right, but, you know, honestly, I don't know if there's a price that can be put on the safety of our folks here, and with what we are seeing, motion-wise, just coming from the north, I mean, I, I watched the news the other day, this fourteen-year-old girl up by the mall, that out of nowhere was attacked and is literally hanging on to her life. A, and that terrifies me, and I don't want to see anything like that in our community, and I am a big proponent and a big supporter of law enforcement, and I think that those are some dollars that we really might need to look at spending.
Mm-hmm. Well, but there's some more conversation needs to take place with the commission, and you guys, so, yeah, there'll be more talk about that.
Okay, it's an ongoing conversation, and it doesn't, there was on the news that it doesn't sound like she's going to make it.
Good God, really?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't watch, I didn't get to watch the news today in preparation for this, seriously?
Yeah, it's very sad.
Just to cycle back a little bit, you talked about the OHV safety course, was that, is that on your guys' website?
It'll be on the Park and Rec's website, so if you go to, uh, www.parkrecnd dot nde dot gov, um, I think there's a courses section on there, I can't remember exactly where it is, it should be pretty obvious if I could find it.
Yeah, what I'm going to do is just make sure that we get it on our Facebook posts, so we'll, you know, just more visibility.
Tomorrow at ten AM, in, in the church parking lot, so.
Okay.
We had a pretty good, we did it last year, we had a pretty good turnout, I think, um, I started ten, so I'll be stopping by and saying, hey, but.
Okay.
Highly encourage kids, I mean, kids are allowed to ride on private property all they want, but if you're twelve to fifteen, you need that certificate, or else you're going to get heckled by us, and we don't like coming down too hard on the kids, they're having fun.
Oh, I got you, I'm just glad you guys are doing that stuff, because I know there's, you know, we've got a lot of kids that like to ride four-wheelers around here, it'd be nice to do it safely.
If I were my bike helmet, will you give me a certificate for ice cream?
I do have free ice cream coupons. Bring a kid with you, so it looks a little less suspicious, but, okay, perfect, yeah.
I have a nine-year-old.
Yeah.
I have a nine-year-old.
There you go.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, anything else?
Yes.
Thanks again.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ross.
All right, so, tabling nine, we'll go on to, Lucas, I'll let you pick that one up. See, you got it just at the right time, I waited patiently for you, I appreciate that.
Number nine or number ten?
Ten.
Nine's table, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so all this one is, Mr. Mayor, is, uh, notices were put in the newspaper earlier for public hearings for, uh, the plat, for the rezone, so my suggestion for the council is to open up those public hearings and then just continue them to your next meeting.
Okay, so I'll open up the public hearing on the plat, you want me to do the rezone at the same time?
Plat rezoned together is just fine.
Okay.
And if we just want a motion from the council to continue the public hearings to the next meeting, all we're doing here is trying to save, uh, expense for having to publish new, uh, notices in the paper.
Motion to approve.
Okay, so you know, so he makes a motion, Sarah does a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, so then we'll, uh, you said you wanted the rezone in on that one, too, right?
Yep, it was.
Yep, okay, just making sure. All right, we'll move on to eleven, then, Jim.
Uh, in the continuation of the Arrowood Third Edition, we have received a petition for improvements for water, sewer, storm, and street infrastructure improvements to be known as the Arrowood Third Edition. Uh, we are going to start the special assessment process, the developer has requested that, like I said, through petition, if you go to the memo that I prepared, we have a location map. This is, uh, west of County Road Seventeen, north of Liberty Lane, east of the railroad tracks, and south, immediately south of Willow Court. Um, improvements will be special assessed to only that neighborhood and only the parcel that the developer owns, so, as you'll see, the location map and the district boundary map are the same, so, special assessments for these improvements.
Jim, do we have any road improvements needed?
Uh-huh. Liberty, Liberty Lane, yeah, was improved, uh, we did some work on Liberty Lane, uh, two many years ago, and this is just basically a big worship, if you look at the plat, it's just in and out.
Okay.
So, I forget how many lots there are, seven?
It's about thirteen, about thirty, twenty-eight, thirty, lots total. In, in this, in, well, in the Arrow Third, so.
And this is all going to be paved, curb and gutter?
It'll be paved, curb and gutter, with, uh, underdrain for the clearwater collection, which is these dump pumps and that, and then the majority of it will be surface drain to a pond in the far northeast corner, and then it'll be routed out through the Ox, going out to the, to the Shiner.
The majority of it will be surface drain?
Yes, they're going to run it in the curb and gutter, and then into an inlet, into the pond, and then out.
Into curb and gutter?
Into curb and gutter.
Good.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Repeat that again, into the pond?
There's going to be a pond in the northwest corner of the property, you'll see that on the plat, and then from there, it'll be discharged out to the north and then to the west. So the developer's been working with the railroad to get a permit to apply some, it's also piping.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, the, the first action I'm here is the resolution creating the district, which is to name it Water, Sewer, Storm, and Street Improvement District Number Twenty, Twenty-One dash five, uh, and to accept that, uh, district boundary map that, that Jim provided to the city council, so first motion is resolution creating the district.
Make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
I can, I can second.
Okay, Naomi does a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. I suppose I got to direct Jimmy to do something about it.
We have to prepare the engineering report, the report will outline the location, the improvements to be made, the, uh, preliminary costs of it, and we put together a special, preliminary special assessments based on, based on the estimate, so, and then we presented you for approval prior to applying the specifications.
I will make that motion to direct the city engineers to prepare the preliminary engineering report and the preliminary cost estimates.
All right, Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, Lucas, talk to us about Tim.
Yes, the next one, uh, we have is the parameters resolution for the, the temp bonds for Terragarden's Third, uh, and South Hill Farms' Third Edition. So all this document does is, it creates a pricing committee that consists of, uh, you, Mr. Mayor, uh, and Brent, uh, and basically what it does is it's just granting you two authority, uh, when they do, uh, offer to sell the bonds, that, uh, you can accept, uh, the sale of that, so long as it doesn't exceed, uh, the amount of ninety million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and, uh, the maximum interest does not exceed two percent, which is pretty dang well.
Very good.
Yeah.
The, one of the last times we did this, to give you comparison, we were talking around four percent, so, just to give you a comparison, one of the last times we did temp on, and it's the very same action.
Anybody got any questions on this, this is just a?
No, I'll make the motion to approve, yeah, for Twenty-One. No, I'll make the motion to approve the twenty, twenty-one A temp bonds.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second? Jeff does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Hey, Jim, you got thirteen?
Yes. Get myself back in order here. Oh, yes. We have tonight is the Water Improvement District number twenty twenty-six, Horace Cropper Water Replacement, Water System Replacement. Uh, bids were opened for the project on May twenty-seventh. We received bids from three contractors, KPH, Celine Brothers, and Dakota Underground. There is a bid tabulation that's attached to this project, the apparent low bidder was KPH with a bid of four million, seventy-six thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars. Uh, the engineer's base bid estimate was four million, one hundred eighteen thousand dollars, four hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty cents. So we came in underneath our budget, and we do have a contingency built into that. Uh, today, the project funding and the cost share, this is the projects we're approaching the State Water Commission for a cost share, sixty-fourty on the cost share. So, um, what we'd be asking for from the State Water Commission is a three million, thirty-six thousand, six hundred dollars, and the local share would be two million, two hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. State Water Commission meets tomorrow to act on their, to act on the, this, one of these projects, or this project amongst others at their June meeting. I received a call from the State Water Commission today, asking if there was any action on it yet by the council, I said you'd be acting on it tonight, and most likely, um, approving contingent upon funding.
And they were okay with it?
The pond.
What's happening? They were okay with that? Well, okay.
They just wanted to make sure it was moving forward.
They wanted to make sure that we approve it, so then when they get it in front of them tomorrow, we get, like, we can get the gold star to get on with this.
So, um, as we all know, KPH has done work for the city before. They are working on projects for the city right now, and, quite honestly, it's a little bit of extra time for them to get some of their projects done, so, um, something we will have to address. We do have liquidated damages built into the contract, that is a statement that they have, they have to, uh, sign and acknowledge that there are liquidity damages of twenty-five hundred dollars per calendar day for failure to meet this. We still have a November completion date of this year, so we're gonna have to get on it and get to it. There's gonna be a lot of coordination with this project, being that it is in developed areas. So we do have in the contract for week, bi-weekly, bi-weekly construction meetings, for every other week, construction meetings for that, so... Um, once the notice of award is issued, I'm going to put a letter with that, just asking for a summary of schedule throughout the summer, just to make sure that it's something that they can handle, so.
And, and if they can't, can they make sure they notify one of you two immediately? Just, I mean, there, there is no project bigger than this city right now.
Right.
This one capped right off.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
So my recommendation would be to award to the low bidder contingent upon State Water Commission and Department of Environmental Quality review and concurrence with the award, so... Um, I do think, Brent, you wanna talk a little bit about the local share, how we're potentially gonna find out?
So the local share, what our plan would be, is to use, we have diversion settlement dollars, uh, to where we have first two and a half million dollars available. Once the P-three contract is signed, my understanding is that would be occurring, uh, within the next month, I believe, June eighteenth. They have immediate, they have a, a gathering, uh, to announce the contractor awarded, who is, the P-three is being awarded to. Uh, our plan would be to use the diversion settlement dollars to be the initial local match, and then if the city council would like to, they could use the utility rates to pay back ourselves to establish, like, a revolving loan or like a CIP fund, to be able to help match future projects. But the utility rate ultimately would be covering the match. That way, those dollars are being covered by the users of the system.
And that would negate the necessity to take out any type of loan.
Yes, what we're, what we're, what we're trying to do is use the dollars that we have
Yep.
from our settlement with the diversion authority, which would be a two and a half million we get up, or we have available. They are, they are, they would be using that to match projects for us, they're not just going to give us a check for two and a half million, it's to be matching dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, a year later, we have the other two and a half available. But our plan would be is to use those dollars from the diversion authority and then put them back into where, after we matched a project, pay ourselves back to where we can actually use those for matching funds for future projects to help leverage more dollars for the city, such as like a bike path, or, you know, if we have another water improvement or a sewer improvement or something, we have dollars that could help us match projects, so... Uh, we're trying to leverage as much state or federal dollars as possible with those diversion settlement dollars.
Well, as someone who desperately needs water, I'm really excited about this project, and so, I think, um, I think this is great.
Yep.
Get moving.
All right, so we wanna make a motion so we can get it moving.
Yes, I will make that motion.
Make sure that you make a contingent on funding.
On funding, yeah.
Yeah.
Second.
Chelsea does a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
I do a roll, do a roll call.
On this one?
Cause it's spending money.
Yes.
No. Sarah?
Yes.
Naomi?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, it's unanimous and it passes. All right, Jim, let's keep our fingers crossed for tomorrow when we can get this thing done. All right.
Will you send a note out and let us know?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, on the floor, Eric, you got fourteen then? Jim?
I do, yes. Uh, number fourteen is Water Improvement District number twenty twenty-seven, this is the connection to the Casperell. What we have before us tonight is the Facility Plan slash Preliminary Engineering Report. This report is prepared at the pri- at the beginning of the project and identifies the need for the project, any public health, safety, regulatory issues, planning area, potential service areas, any type of due technical investigations. We have to analyze alternatives, you know, such as do nothing, new water treatment plant, connection to Casperell, connection to the city Fargo, we compare the alternatives, permit, regulation, compliance, and then go to alternative selection process, then we have our selected alternative. We also have to solicit federal agencies for federal money, uh, solicit federal agencies for their comment on the project since we are trying to seek out federal funds. Now, this would be applicable, this will be applicable if the city chooses to use SRF loan. And that's been the backup plan throughout this, if the local match would come from a state revolving loan fund. Now, if you choose to do something else, you can do that, but we have to have this document in place if we were to use the state revolving fund money. And with the, any type of a solicitation, there's a month there for them to receive comments, so we've already got that done, just to keep things moving, so we don't have any hiccups with that, so... Um, as we, as we've all discussed, the selected alternative was a connection to Casperell at Sixty-third Street and Eighty-second Avenue, moving forward. So this project consists of a meter pit with a small booster pump in it to transmit Casperell water to the tower, to Horace's tower, for distribution in the city.
So our plan would be to use the low-interest loans SRF, cause we would not have enough dollars to match this project without doing a loan, so, cause we wouldn't have the full, the other two and a half million available at that time. So we'd have to do a loan to do that one for this project, or we might be able to use some diversion settlement and then to rest low interest, but that's why we're doing this too.
So this is going to go before the State Water Commission, will be at their August meeting. This is a water supply project, so it's a seventy-five percent cost share, twenty-five percent local shares. So it's a good deal when it comes to water supply projects, so. The preliminary work has been funded by the State Water Commission. Hopefully, we find out tomorrow that if they fund the preliminary, they'll fund the construction, and we can continue that at their next meeting.
Yeah, that would be great if we could get, get some of that from those guys, so... Any questions on this one, we kinda talked about this before, so... Otherwise, I'm gonna look for somebody to, uh, make a motion to approve the Facility Plan or Preliminary Engineering Report.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Okay, Naomi does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
And that, just to be clear, state revolving fund, twenty-five percent match, no assessments at this time.
It would be paid back through utility rate, would be our plan, yes.
So the twenty-five percent is a State Water Commission thing, the state revolving fund is a two percent loan thing?
Yes.
There's two different avenues, two different pots of money.
Okay.
One is a five.
Yeah. We had to go through the route of establishing the assessment districts in order to
I know that.
help.
Yeah.
Help with our funding.
But let's clarify that for everybody, that we had to go through that process in order to get the ball rolling on this, so, good, okay, thank you.
All right, we'll go on to part B then, Jim.
Um, part B is just the resolution directing the engineer to prepare the following specifications for that, for like we just talked about.
Yep, so if someone wants to make a motion.
I'll make that motion to direct.
Second.
Okay, Sarah makes a motion, Chelsea does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. The under fifteen, Jim?
All right. Number fifteen is a bid of work for Water, Sewer, Storm, and Street Improvement District number twenty-one, twenty twenty-one dash two, Terragardens Third Edition. Uh, the bid opening for that project was Thursday, June third. Just, we received bids from six contractors, Dakota Underground, Fox Underground, Key Contract, Master Con- Construction, Northern Improvement, and Celine Brothers. The apparent low bidder was Fox Underground with a bid of one million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred five dollars and sixteen cents. Uh, the engineer's estimate was one million, eight hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred sixty-six dollars, ninety-five cents, so that fell in line with where we were, where the engineer was, was thinking. We didn't have any corrections on that bid, I sent out a bid tabulation earlier today, I got it late after that, so... There were no corrections made to that, so, um, Fox Underground has done work within the, within the metro area for, for quite a while, so I guess my recommendation would be to award to Fox Underground.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would just throw in a contingency, contingent on the city's receipt of the letter of credit.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, somebody wanna make that motion?
I'll make that motion. Contingent on the letter of credit.
Okay, Chelsea makes a motion, can I get a second?
All second.
Sarah does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, let's go on to Engineering Services Agreement.
Yes, that one. Okay, so I prepared Engineering Services Agreement for construction engineering on the Terragardens Third Edition. This is very similar to the other projects we've done and the structure of the contract. We have a part in here for design review, so the, the improvement district pays for any of the preliminary work up to the construction, and then we have, uh, construction engineering based on outman hours and expenses, and it's set up as an hourly not-to-exceed, so it's not a lump sum contract, if the contract gets done early, you don't have a lot of time into it, we, we feel it for what we've got into, we don't have anything else on there, so, it's estimated with a seventeen-week schedule. We've got, um, you see the summary on the back, and I've got a breakdown of demand hours and expenses on it too. So, the summary of it basically is, uh, design engineering is capped at ten thousand dollars, the fee for the construction engineering was a hundred forty-four thousand, five hundred dollars, and like I said, that's an hourly not-to-exceed contract, and this cost will all be broken down and into the Special Assessment District, so... Very similar to the exact, to what we've done in the past, nothing new, nothing out of the ordinary.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that?
No, I appreciate the hourly not-to-exceed format. That makes a lot of sense to me regarding projects like this that may or may not require a lot of interaction, so, we do appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right, somebody wanna make a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Sixteen, Lucas, you got that one?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you'll recall at your, uh, previous meeting, uh, there was a discussion on reallocation of, uh, special assessments for, uh, the Terragardens Development, uh, if you will, between Terragarden Second and Terragarden Third, have reallocation done. There were two property owners that, uh, had not provided the city with correspondence, so you directed my office to send them the letters, uh, or to send them letters. So what Brent, uh, has popped up right now, uh, are the letters that we sent, uh, to Jacqueline Fritz and, uh, Austin Case, uh, requesting that they provide, uh, the city with some sort of response, uh, indicating whether or not, uh, they are aware, uh, of this issue, and that if they have any concerns with the city, uh, working with the county to reallocate, uh, assessments on their property. Uh, Austin Case, uh, actually provided us with the, that letter that, uh, everyone else had done, saying that, that he's aware of it, uh, and that he doesn't have any concerns, so they get that from him. And we got a letter from, uh, the developer, they had talked with, uh, Jacqueline Fritz, uh, and that she was going to provide the same letter, uh, we have not seen that. But again, uh, in the letter that I sent, um, from, from our office or from my office, it requested, uh, that they, or that she touched base with, me or Brent, I think I had in there before, uh, last Friday, to say if there's any concerns, and I have not received, uh, anything. Uh, and then it also said that, uh, if she wanted to discuss the matter before the council, that tonight, uh, would be that time. Uh, and I don't believe that she's here. So that's kinda where we're at with that, two letters were sent, the city